Okay.
Okay, we are live.
All right, well then we will call this meeting to order at 6:06. We'll start with our normal roll call. I'm just gonna say the name, I'll go around and say the names as I see them in my order and just please signify your presence by saying here. Alex Robinette.
Here.
Toni Stein.
Here.
Amy Rodnick.
Here.
And Commissioners Nash, Allen, and Rhodes are not present at the time. Okay. Jamil's having trouble getting the link to work. He says he'll keep trying.
Okay, I'll send him a new one as well.
Yeah, that'd be helpful. One sec. Okay. All right, let's go ahead and move forward with our consent agenda, which is composed of the minutes from last month's meeting. Does anybody wish to pull that item from our consent agenda? All right, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as it stands then?
Also move.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, thank you Amy for moving and Alex for seconding. All in favor of passing the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Actually, sorry, we should do a roll call, huh? Sorry, roll call, Alex.
Can we do that?
You just did it.
Can we do that?
No, you did it.
Well, do we have to have each vote be a roll call?
I think you mean the roll call.
So we can.
Sorry. Gotcha.
I thought for some reason it was virtual, we were doing roll call votes just to help with future. All right, I'll do a roll call. Alex.
Aye.
Amy.
Here.
Well, no, you're saying aye.
Oh, aye, sorry.
No worries, Toni.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Motion passes unanimously. All right, we're gonna move on then into our sorry, let me switch back real quick. We're gonna shift over then to our public hearing then at 6:11.
Jamil just joined us via phone. His phone number ends in the 4111.
Okay, fantastic.
And did we skip over public comments? By chance?
Yeah, we sure did, sorry. Happy to bring it back in. My mistake. So we'll then talk about public comments. Are there any comments from the public who are not pertaining to items on our agenda? To signify that on the and Brian Nash is here as well. That's good.
We have no one raising their hand and we have experienced participants in the audience. In other words, they know how to raise their hands and participate.
Okay, thank you. Well then, having no raised hands, we will now move into our public hearing at 6:10. And this public hearing is to discuss possible amendments to the subdivision two residential tree canopy management of the city's code of ordinances. So are there members of the public? If you would like to speak, we ask that you work to keep it to three minutes. Y'all are experienced, but I think it's what, star two if you're on the phone just to raise your hand or you utilize the icon in the center of your screen if you're on a computer. So please at this point, let us know you'd like to speak and we will work to make sure you can be heard. All right, seeing no hands raised from the comment for the public, we'll go ahead and close our public hearing then at 6:11. And let's discuss the potential tree canopy management changes to our ordinance. Councilmember Patillo sent around I think she originally sent this around, it just didn't make it in our packet. So if y'all look in your emails, you should have an updated PDF of the changes, that red line, the changes. I received mine at around 5:17 this afternoon. If y'all want to pull that up, that may help add additional information to the reasons some of these changes have been made or requested. At this time, I would appreciate Councilmember Patillo taking the mic and kind of walking us through some of the changes that she is considering to the ordinance.
Am I live?
We can hear you.
Oh, great. Okay, thanks. So, yeah, sorry about that. I had been working on this draft and just, I think there was a little snafu when it got put in the packet where the PDF wasn't printed with the comments showing and I just noticed that right before the meeting.
I didn't get a new version of it, by the way, in my email.
I did not either.
It was updated in the packet. It wasn't sent out via email.
Oh, okay.
Well, I'm looking online. I don't see a red line.
Sorry, I misspoke when I said red line.
It's further down, never mind.
Yeah. And I misspoke when I said red line. It should have the comments. The original packet would not have appeared with them, so.
Now it all makes sense. It makes sense now.
Okay.
And if you don't see them in your packet, refresh and then it should be there for you. It's draft two PDF.
I've got it.
So the the draft two, I added notes about all of the different council meetings that I have a record of where we took, have taken action on the tree ordinance and then also the different planning and zoning commission meetings. And that way, if anybody wanted to go back and really look at the history of some of the different things that are in the tree ordinance that will hopefully start adding to this and that'll just provide a good roadmap for the different times that the tree ordinance was discussed if somebody wants to go back and and look at different items. I didn't, I didn't add any comments about what was actually done. I just literally pulled from the agendas from those meetings. So someone would still have to go back and look at that, but at least there's an idea of all the different places where it has been discussed. So that's on pages one and two of that draft two. And then the next thing I did, because initially when I initiated this this segment of amendment, the the proposals that I had were what are shown under amendment decisions A, B, and C. And then Councilmember Hudson at a later meeting requested what is shown as amendment D and E. And then in further discussions with Carrie, she requested F and there's some official notes about that in her notes. Councilmember Henley has requested that we revisit the clarifying the section that talks about setbacks. And I asked her to take a stab at actually working on that language, but I didn't ever see any. So that's where we are with that. I just kind of put, and then I did get some questions from a resident about how one knows where one's setbacks are. Then we added, from y'all's discussion, I added item H, which was from Brian Nash of types of trees under evaluation. We also had letter I, which was a discussion from another resident who asked us to look at the types of trees defined as replacement species and consider a cherry laurel, which is also a native species. J is also another one of Carrie's requests that we have a minimum size of trees indicated that have to be included in the tree survey. K was also from the notes that I took from the meeting you all had where Councilmember Hudson was requesting some sort of demo permit timing and encouragement to keep trees until a building permit is issued. I don't have any proposed amendments for that, but it's something to discuss. L was from Alex Robinette of a tree health maintenance if no house was built. And then M was another resident requested to me of considering a delayed time period for removal of a tree after a permit is granted. So that if somebody wanted to kind of do some, like some annual planning and they knew a tree might need to come out in the future, that they could go ahead and put in a permit and request to be able to remove that tree, but potentially plant the new trees before they would actually remove a tree. So just basically the order of things. So those are the letters and then what I did is in the comments that are attached in the code itself, I indicated like on, for example, under section 107-369C, which is on page five, I have a comment to my amendment that's amendment A. And so that goes with letter A in that list. And then, so each, when I did put an amendment that I, or note something, I correlated it with the letter of the amendment up above. So that's kind of the key, if you want to look at it. And really I just started doing that because there were so many different ideas thrown out there that I was trying to track them and I didn't have time to flesh out language for all of them. But I did go ahead and note them and have them available for discussion. So that was also just to maybe simplify what you all do if there's agreement on certain amendments tonight that you do want to recommend and then perhaps other amendments that you want to take up and do further research on. It allows you to potentially go through and make motions by amendment or by letter amendment or potentially, you know, group them up and say you want to go with A, B, and D tonight and make that recommendation. It just hopefully simplifies the process a little bit. And that's what I've got for the intro.
Well, we appreciate all the hard work you did trying to get a complex change to the ordinance and simplifying it for us. Thank you. Y'all, I'm fine to just take this sort of by the letters if you guys want to go through it. But before we do that, I think we can also then perhaps, is Carrie here tonight? I think she was gonna be gone, right?
Yes, she's on vacation tonight, so I'll do my best representing her. She did provide a memo in the packet as to her feelings about kind of each of those different scenarios.
All right, has everybody had a chance to review her memo? In its shortest form, I think is on page seven of our packet.
And Councilmember Patillo worked very closely with Carrie on some of the things, so she may be able to add more color than I can to kind of what the conversation was around that. But they, they worked hard together.
Yeah, and generally her recommendations are to set a diameter of 12 inches as are, that then has to be included on all tree surveys. Whereas I think it's undefined right now or it may be at six. We'll talk to that.
I think the point there was all trees, not just the protected trees, because I think there's been some community fear when they see a large tree coming down and they don't realize that it's not protected. And so just to have every tree over 12 inches diameter and Amy, remind me, isn't that, doesn't that line up with another ordinance? I think it might line up with something either the state does or another entity.
So the state does it at 10 inches, which is going to be something we can talk about when we get to that of setting a diameter for all trees that happen to be on the survey. And well, we can talk to that. Because that is in Amy's list of amendments.
I have a quick clarification question. Is the 12 inches, does that correspond to the protected tree? Is that the critical dimension at which we're talking about or is any protected, what is the minimum diameter for a protected tree? So this is Amy, the 12 inches correlates with the protected tree diameter.
Okay.
And so originally when we were talking with Carrie about it, she didn't have a recommendation about the minimum and it looks, and so I threw in six inches because that was just kind of a target amount that we talked about, but it looks like that she's updated in her comments here. She's updated to say 12 inches, which is, is fine. I think she just wanted some clarity on which trees need to be on the tree survey and which don't. The wording is a little bit confusing because it just says it needs to be on a survey, but it feels to me like it should also say that that relates to the critical dimension for a protected tree, but maybe.
And that can be, I don't think she worked so hard on the language just so much to provide her thoughts since she wasn't going to be at this meeting.
Gotcha. On page 11 and then it's letter A at the top of page 11, that's where that amendment J is that was the actual language that I added that could be put in the code that would indicate that all existing trees that are at least six inches in diameter would be included on the tree survey, but that could also be, it looks like what Carrie's saying in her little, in her brief is that she's recommending 12 inches. And like I said, that was, six inches was just a placeholder for, for us to have an amount to talk about and it was an amount that was thrown around and when we had our telephone conversation. So I would defer to what Carrie's requesting just because I think that that, she's looking at it from the day to day. And we think that the 12 inches is a better number than the 10 inches that is the state recommendation or rule. Well, we didn't, we didn't necessarily use the state's recommendation because their ordinance accomplishes a different solution than ours. And it addresses, our ordinance is not in contradiction to the states, but does not necessarily follow the the type of guidance that the states gave. They have, they had a different set of issues they were trying to address. They were trying to address ordinances that were designed to collect a lot of fees from people wanting to remove trees. And we wrote an ordinance that's designed to incentivize people helping us with our canopy.
So I don't, I don't know when the open point for discussion is. Are we there yet, Jordan, or is?
No, we were just trying to go through Carrie's recommendations and I'm happy to bounce through it and then come back to that. Sorry.
I've got thoughts and numbers, but I'll keep them to myself until we're at the right point.
So do you guys want to, I just want to make sure Carrie spent a lot of work on this and want to make sure her recommendations get addressed as these are the four she's recommending. So can I quickly hit off those four and then we can go through this in the code? Does that work? All right, seeing heads nod. So she talked about all trees over 12 inches being in tree surveys and, and that sort of starting the status for protection. Amending, what did she say here? Sorry. Basically it came down to if you've worked with a certified arborist and on two occasions they've come out and tried to save a tree, there's a reduction in fees and a reduction in the size requirement to the minimum amount of two inches. Or greater, but that basically if you spent a lot of money trying to save a tree, I know I've personally done that in the past with a certified arborist and you lose that tree, we don't want the city kicking you while you're down. I lost a beautiful oak and it would have definitely felt like being kicked while I was down. So that, that's a simple one to look at. Her third one was related to how to communicate that a permit has been done. Her recommendation is to go with what we do with other permits, which is to post them on a construction board, like a permit placement board if a place is under construction or on the dash of the tree cutting car, because that's what police are used to looking for, for other permits. So they'll either look on the dash or it'll be posted on site. And we'll talk to that. And then finally, having something about proper painting for oaks, which is a new, was a new one for me. So and basically just trying to make sure that when they cut, they immediately paint the oaks because it fits with best practices for oak wilt. And trying to codify that as opposed to recommending it. Any questions about her recommendations? All right, why don't we then shift in our packets then to page 10 and we can just start discussing some of the amendments. And sort of see if there's thoughts on each of them and then we'll we'll go through. Sorry, my notes unfortunately have the old version, so let me pull up the new one. All right. So first section is letter A and these are in regards to adjustments in view of sectioning numbering from the recodification. I went through these. I didn't see anything out of whack. I don't know if anybody has any thoughts on the just changing section numbering and all that information. Does anybody have any comments on A? I think that's generally housekeeping, so happy to recommend any changes to section headings. Shall we move on to B then, which is timing requirements in the ordinance? Especially given the pandemic. Amy, was there language in this? Or was that the one you were saying we didn't quite have language for it?
Um, yeah, there's, there's language. Let me find it real fast.
Yeah, I'm looking for it too in your comments. I see it on page 15 of our packet. Talking about
Oh, yeah, there it is.
Section B, section subsection three. Any person who prunes or removes a protected tree under the provisions of the subsection shall within X days of action, we said 14 days of such action, or as soon as practical, if there's a coinciding declaration of state of emergency in the city, apply for a tree removal per person. So in the event that we have some sort of windstorm that knocks down trees, we're not going to have a line outside city hall for people to prune and remove them. They just, we're asking that after that fact, they go in and post facto apply for the permit. Do I have that correct?
Right, so that section was already in there. The thing is that before it just said seven days and so one of the things I'm just trying to do as I am looking through any code that we're working on is revisiting it in view of things we've learned about during the pandemic and so, and just potentially the ongoing effects of being in a state of declaration and how that impacts people's abilities to respond and the city's availability to be open. And our staff has done an amazing job of being available, but I think that just giving a little bit longer of a grace period to accommodate for more different types of circumstances in there is something that I thought worth considering. So I just extended it to 14 days and then also if there's a coinciding disaster declaration, which oftentimes are state of emergency, which may be issued for different reasons that we would just have something in there that doesn't make people afraid that they're gonna suddenly be out of whack on their tree ordinance issue in the midst of other stressors they may be facing.
Any comments from the commission on this change?
Yeah, Jordan, I wanted to chime in first of all to thank Amy for doing such an incredible job on organizing these various amendments because it's definitely a sort of this, this roadmap you created Amy is incredible. So thank you so much for taking the time to do it. I know it wasn't easy and I know it took a lot of time. I think that 14 days sounds a good reason. We need to worry about it being seven. I think that you'll have plenty of times where there's something that doesn't rise to the level of declaration of a state of emergency, but at the same time it takes a little bit longer than a week to set up or get the paperwork in. So I'm all in favor of 14 days. It creates flexibility, I think, as a city and as a community where we're given and flexible about things and I think that would be a flex that. I support that too.
Okay. Other commissioners, any comments?
Just, just to be clear, I'm not probably as familiar with the tree ordinance as I should be, but this is emergency pruning. So if a storm knocks a tree down, you're still subject to the tree ordinance and replacing that tree?
Right, so under this section, though, there's, there's a kind of a carve out where if it's if it's because of a clear and immediate danger that you had to remove your tree, then you can come back and show that after the fact. And then also potentially be able to have mitigation of the type of tree replacement that you have to have. So for example, if you had a, if one of the trees that's in the kind of the setback area of your property were to be blown over in a windstorm and then you come in and avail yourself of this provision, then the tree replacement is reduced down to just one replacement tree, whereas if it wasn't an emergency and you were just removing it, you would have to do three replacement trees. So it, it, the kind of the benefit is that it's allowing someone to, who had an unexpected need to replace a tree to not have to replace as many trees as well.
Okay, and then the pruning, so tree doesn't, if you're just trimming your trees, you know, for regular maintenance, you're not necessarily pulling a permit, but I guess this pruning isn't in the concept of mercy, or am I wrong? Are you now pulling a permit to trim trees?
You always have to pull a permit to trim trees, but they're free and so you just have to file a permit with the city.
Yeah, Toni, we're gonna be auditing your previous tree pruning.
I feel like maybe that happens.
Public record, public record.
Well, and in this case, if it was a protected tree, if you're pruning more than 25% of it, that's when it would be triggered. So it be all of them.
Yeah, I mean, in the course of emergency, I don't see any problem with this concept either. I mean, I think 14.
Am I, oh, sorry. Am I hearing that like if somebody whacks away half their tree to get a downtown view that, and it's a big, you know, protected tree, there might be some penalty? Right, so if you're up in the, up in section, find it. I think that's good. Number of lopsided trees. Yeah, excessive pruning includes pruning that exceeds 25% of the canopy of the tree. So that, if you're removing 25% of the canopy of the tree or exceeding that, then that constitutes a removal and requires a permit.
How is that?
Well-
But like, 20, like what does it mean to say pruning 25%? I just-
Most arborists um, don't want, like, they'll be looking at your trees and don't want to prune more than 25% because that's when it puts your trees at risk.
I know. I'm just thinking about enforceability as well. And the neighbor that squawks that somebody else removed more than 25%. And like, this is not really going to be a very enforceable provision. I guess it being on the books itself for the like, careful conscientious person who's hiring an arborist, who would also be recommending no more than 25%, all of this kind of helps confirm that. I'm just thinking on the outliers where you have disputes. I don't know that this provision is going to provide a whole lot of protection. Somebody's gonna come in and be like, it was at least 47% removal, I can tell. And like, I don't know how we'll really-
Well, I think, I can think of a couple of examples where it's very clear that about 25% of the tree has just been lopped off because the shape of the tree is clearly so lopsided because somebody was trying to capture a view or something. And it, it just, it's more obvious that it's detrimental to the tree. And I, I agree, it's hard to stop, it's hard to enforce, it's hard to count. But I think just having the message out there that, hey, maybe that's not good practice is important.
I, I hear you. I just, I wanted to point out, and maybe it's because my area of law, we deal with like wording and ambiguity all the time. Like measuring something in 25%? Are we talking in terms of volume, in terms of number of branches, you know, in terms of canopy coverage? Like, make sure we could pick a lot of holes on what it means to be 25% production.
And Brian, I, I, yeah, I agree with you too, Brian. And I would, the thing I would add is that um, when we were drafting this, we looked at several different ordinances in different locations. And one of the things that we had to decide is that because we don't have like full-time staff members who can oversee this, that we put the onus on the property owner to read the ordinance and take care of their trees and be a good neighbor and care about the canopy. And so there, I would agree that there are ambiguities like that, um, that the city doesn't have the resources to be able to enforce. So we are, there is, there is a reliance on our community of deciding to care about the canopy together.
Yeah, I hear you. I think, I think Alex's point and to your point too, Amy, is um, we're sending the message as to what the expectation is. We're asking you to sign a verification of a leave as part of the permitting process. We may end up with, I, and I think that's all this provision really can do, I guess is all I'm saying. Is we send the message that what the expectation is, we, we need you to act with your word on that. Um, what we're not going to really be able to do is have some kind of, there's not going to be an arbiter of the 25% threshold and it's some kind of dispute between one neighbor and another, whether or not it is met or not. You know, that's going to be something that's beyond our capability. Anyway, that was fully off topic, so I apologize.
No, it's fine. Good to bring up those issues with enforceability. Uh, we have had neighbors that have gone to lawsuits over trimming the trees. And so it's a good thing to recognize that this isn't a hypothetical, Brian. It's a, it's an actual filed lawsuits over this. So um-
Is that right?
Oh yeah. So is there? I mean, it assumes that in the event that a permit is filed to, you know, if the, the law is followed and a permit is filed and they recognize it's a protected tree because of its size and uh, species, um, that these rules will be reminded and that they'll be told, oh, you can only cut 25%. If it's 28, that's hard. If it's 50, um, or if it's unmeasured. I mean, the problem for me is like, you know, a photo from, does a, a, a Google images from two years ago suffice? Or how do you, you know, it, it's not unless someone's out there trying to measure this stuff. So um, Amy, do you have any thoughts on that? Or do we go with uh? Do you, do you prefer to keep it at 25% for now? That's kind of a different adjustment. And by the way, we can bring this up again next, next meeting if we want to have-
Why don't we march through, why don't we march through each of these that are, have been enumerated by Amy and then come back to sort of other items that we may want to address?
Like it. Let's do that.
I say that as the pot calling the kettle black since I diverged us onto this path.
Hey, um, hey, Jordan, this is Jamil and I'm, I'm sorry. I've been really struggling on the technology side. So finally hung up and on the, or called back in on my phone. I just can't get it to work on my iPad. But um, could, you know, and I'm sorry if you guys already covered this, but how did, um, how did we land at 12 inches?
I think it's really low, really low standard to me. I, I was gonna tell, so if we want to go down this path, uh, right now, Jordan, I looked at my tree survey that I did when I built this house, uh, on Chris Code. Now at the time, we did not have a tree ordinance, but we required a tree survey, which was always kind of funny to me because it wasn't really used. But we did six inches and up when I did my tree survey.
And that's what the current code calls for is six inches and up.
I think, I, you know, I don't know if Jamil's going the other way on this, but I think you have to have a survey that goes less than what your protected limit is because at the very least for um, protection with neighbor complaint, you want to be able to show, yes, you know, because I looked at mine, I had 30 trees that were surveyed, right? Almost all of them were less than 12 inches. But if I started to chop down some of them, I guess that, now, I did it because I wanted to preserve as many oaks as possible. And I wanted to know where, you know, what we had to deal with. But if somebody comes back and says, you chopped down 12 trees over here on the north into your proper line, you can actually have the survey to say, well, four of those were cedars and the other, you know, eight were 10 inches and under. I think that's what you want. That's, I think that's why you need to go less than that. So you have some form of documentation on that. My thinking.
So you're fine-
Well, what I said-
And Jamil might have had the opposite point. I don't know.
Well, I was not so much focused on what had to be on the survey. Um, and when I use the term low standard, maybe you could call it a high standard, but um, I thought the city of Austin was, I thought it was either 16 and 20 or 20 and 24 with one, you know, the lower standard being, um, you know, where you had to mitigate and a higher standard being a tree that you had to go before, um, you had to go before council to remove. Um, so 12 inches just seemed, seemed like a low number to me.
You're, you're saying it needs to be a bigger tree before we get concerned about its removal. Is that right?
Yeah, just, just seems like, seems low to me.
I think that's a heritage tree if I'm, but I'm actually not certain that you're referring to Jamil versus just a protected tree. But-
Look at that.
Jordan knows.
Jordan's raising his hand. Guys, I've taken a, uh, an unwanted lesson over the last three or four weeks in the city of Austin's code. And at a very high level, it's 19 inches is at the point at which it becomes protected. And as Jamil referred to, it can still be cut down, but there are mitigation fees related to the number, the size of the diameter of the trunk past 19 inches. Um, and those can range from $50 per inch to uh, I think up to 200. So it can be expensive to cut down a 20 inch tree is what I would say. Um, at 24 inches, it goes into heritage status, Alex, which is you're referring to. And from 24 to 30, arborists are allowed to give city approval. Um, past 30, it has to go to, I think Zap, but I forget. It has to go to, or sorry, or the environmental commission. It has to go to a, a public commission for any tree over 30 inches. So kind of a different, as Amy said, the code is related to fees, um, and, and the, the charging of those fees as opposed to say, protection of canopy. Um, this is trying to go a slightly different route of, hey, you can cut it down. We're just asking that you replant for future canopy protection.
Well, I would argue that the 12 inches, because it came at the recommendation of a respected arborist is a good number. And I would also say Rollingwood is a much smaller community than Austin, which has such a much higher percentage of large diameter trees. Rollingwood's got some, some great oak trees, but you know, we're not awash in a lot of big diameter trees. And so if the objective is to protect the canopy, I think that the 12 inches is a really good recommendation. And I also agree with Brian that I do think that most of the trees need to be noted on your survey, um, not just 12 inches and up.
So Jordan, I can answer Jamil's question as well, if that's okay. This is Amy.
Yeah, sure. That's great.
So um, Jamil, when, when Wendy and I first started working on drafting the tree ordinance, we looked at a lot of different cities and what they were doing. And I said some of this earlier, but specifically to your question, we were looking at the state law, which um, was addressing tree ordinances that start restricting at 10 inches. And then we were looking at the city of Austin that has all these different tiers. And we were really just going to simplify it to something that reflected the, the trees that are providing a lot of the canopy for our city. And um, instead of doing tiered structures, we just went with one size to simplify it for our residents. The residents are filling out the application. Um, and it was larger than what the city's, I mean, what the state's lowest was of 10. Um, and we also did have a recommendation from an arborist that starting at 12 inches is where we're getting a lot of our canopy from. So that was, it's as basic as that. If it's something that we need to revisit, then I'm, I'm totally willing to revisit any section of the ordinance because we, we worked hard to just find some compromises that would create an ordinance that hopefully residents could follow and that would also um, avoid the, the lots getting clear cut without a plan for there to be a canopy replanted.
Well, yeah, thanks, thanks for that background. And I, I appreciate all the, all the work um, that you've done on it. Um, I do think 12 inches is a pretty, is a pretty low standard, but uh, it's just one, one person's opinion.
Do you guys want to discuss this? I think this is item J. Is that, do I have that correct? Let me go back here. Yeah, it's, it's item J. Um, but the, the 12 inch standard shows up under page 12 in our packet. Um, down in, what is this? Section 107, it's near the bottom, uh, where you'll see a list of species and then under B, protected trees defined as means a tree that has a trunk of diameter 12 inches. So what I'm hearing from Carrie is we asked for a survey, a tree survey of the property would have anything six inches and up, and we protect trees that are 12 inches and up. Does that make sense? So what I think Carrie was saying is let's just have a survey of all trees that are 12 inches and up rather than six and up for the survey, but meanwhile protections at 12.
So Jordan, just to clarify, the ordinance previously didn't have a limit, it didn't have a minimum size for trees on the survey. So what we, what I put in amendment is initial, like, what if we started at six inches? And then Carrie has her new recommendation that she's gone and talked to somebody and she's saying 12.
Okay.
That's what I know. And I'm willing to defer to her and whatever others think is, is the best for making sure it's understandable.
Well, and I just, I just want to clarify that there's kind of two conversations going on. There's what size tree needs to be on your survey and what size tree and up do we want to protect? Um, and Brian made a point of perhaps we want to go, trees on survey should be a little bit smaller than what we're trying to protect. Uh, Brian, if I'm restating that correctly. Um, and it sounds like staff is happy to have the 12 inch be the number for where protection starts and just every tree of 12 inches or greater needs to be on the survey that will also then identify those that are protected. Do we have any thoughts on a recommendation on J? Do we want to go with 12?
Jordan, Commissioner Nash is raising his hand.
Oh, sorry. I was looking at the thing. Go ahead, Brian.
So I think we should stick with our list and then we'll get to things outside the list afterwards. I would go with what Amy has proposed in her red line version, which is six inches, not 12 for the survey.
And sorry, one quick question. This is back off topic. So 12 inches, it's currently protected to uh, Jamil's question. So you, if you're voluntarily removing that building house, whatever, you replace that with three trees that are at least eight feet high and not less than one quarter up to a maximum of six inches. Am I accurate?
It depends on where the tree is placed that you're removing. So if the tree that you're removing is within what we, what we defined as like the buildable space, which includes setbacks that are 10 feet or less, then you're only doing a one-to-one replacement. But if it's in the, basically the green space, which is the 20 and 30 foot setback spaces, then it's three to one. And that, that's to incentivize people keeping trees in their green spaces.
You, Amy, what, what section is that on the code? That's already in place, right? That's not a proposed amendment to what we have.
Right. That's already the-
Yeah, I was, I was just wondering to Jamil's point about, because we, we weren't involved in the original implementation of this tree ordinance. And now I guess it's under our purview. And I'm just trying to catch up on the ordinance. I haven't gone through it and wasn't familiar with it. But I, I would say I agree to what we're supposed to be tackling tonight. Um, we can, you know, talk about the 12 inch later if we want to, but for tonight, I agree that I think six, I just looked, pulled up my last survey I did. And I don't remember if I gave them direction on diameter or what, but I see, you know, a handful on there that are eight inches. So um, anyway, I, I think the six inches for the survey seems reasonable.
Well, and to that point, Tony, I'm almost certain I didn't tell them when I got the tree survey, other than just said, give me a tree survey. So I think the standard for the survey companies is to do six inches-ish. Cause at least I have some on my survey that are six inches. Um, I, so I guess where I'm going with this is I don't think it's any additional cost to the homeowner. But if I'm going to do a tree survey, whether I tell them do minimum of six inches versus 12 inches, I think it's going to be around the same price. And I think it just makes sense. And then that way, there's a documented record of what was on the property when you start. If there's some disputes that- And I'm, I'm with you in wanting to revisit some of the other things. I wasn't trying to say we shouldn't talk about all that stuff today. I just was kind of thinking, since Amy created this nice list, maybe we walk through the list and then we start talking about other things that jump out of that. since Amy created this nice list, maybe we walk through the list and then we start talking about other things that jump out at us as stuff to either decide today or talk about it or continue the conversation. You made some profound points that everybody's really thinking about. I can tell. Needling of contemplation.
Yeah, I have over the six inches on the survey and address the protection level later.
Uh, happy to move on.
And I agree that it's.
Go ahead.
Oh, I I was just gonna say that I agree that I think it's also standard because my survey also has six inch trees. So I don't think we're asking anybody to do anything that isn't standard.
It's kind of this kind of status quo, I think, from what we've been doing, at least since I did a survey in two thousand and twelve.
Okay. So I'm hearing some consolidation for the survey around six inches. Do I have that correct? For now? All right, I've got J then. We'll we'll touch on it here in a second, but just going through that. Let's talk about this next one, which is C, Charlie. About waiver or some reduction in for a place trying to save a tree. Removal under Oakwell abatement and application fee reduction or waivers. So C, let me switch over to my other thing here is going to be, that language will be in. I should have written this down. I have the wrong thing, but.
Page ten of the numbered document. I don't know what page that is on the packet. Let me see.
Yeah, it's seventeen in the packet. You'll see it there. Big red outline, at least on my screen. If city arborist determines that an applicant provides sufficient documentation from certified arborist. That a protected tree is diseased, dead, or imposes immediate threat. And they've documented two prior actions performed by a certified arborist. The city arborist can then waive the replacement tree requirement and waive the fee. And if it's required to be removed under, God, I did this eighteen two oh nine. So let me go back to eighteen.
That's the Oakwell ordinance.
Okay, sorry. If it's required to be run or ordinance, they can waive the replacement tree requirement and waive the fee. So we're looking at sections E and F of one oh seven dash three seven five. And like, like Amy said, it's ten on the numbered pages and in our packet, it's page seventeen for the upper left-hand corner. Any thoughts on that?
What's the, sorry, I'm reading the proposed change. What what is it now?
So right now, um, there's, if you if you have a a tree that's removed for either of these reasons, then the city arborist can reduce the replacement tree requirement to just one replacement tree under certain circumstances, but not in not in all of these. And so the the request that had been made by several different residents, and I think it's valid on E is that if somebody's actively trying to save a tree and they still can't, that we look at mitigating in some way. And then F is based on Oakwell. And so in both of these, I I lettered them separately because the you could, you could choose to recommend E and F. And then within each one, you could either waive the tree replacement or and or waive the application fee. And so I I believe what Carrie recommended was actually that the replacement application fee not be waived completely, but reset to thirty-five dollars. And then that the replacement tree requirement not be fully waived, but be set to a two-inch tree. So those are the.
Correct.
So kind of there's, there's choosing whether we want to provide some exception for essentially someone who's working with an arborist and try to save a tree. F is Oakwell. And then what types of mitigation do we want to provide is the the other question for each of those.
I would I haven't really thought this all through, except that I feel like anybody who's trying to save a tree and paying an arborist is also likely to want to replace the tree irrespective of an ordinance telling them to. And so they might be more incented to buy a bigger tree after, you know, if if they don't have to also pay fees for their hardship. But
Well, I'm wondering too, one thought, I know when I bought my house, there was something like I think a couple of hundred trees and and they were all tiny. I had an arborist over and and I was surprised the arborist recommended that I cut down tons of them. He said they're all small because none of them were healthy. There's too many of them fighting each other. And he actually recommended that I cut down several oak trees that were small. I don't know that there's, they were diseased necessarily, but just said that they were had a high probability of falling and hitting my house. I decided to take his recommendation on a lot of non-oak trees. And I left a few of the oak trees and let's watch them. If it really looks like it gets worse, it's imminently going to fall, then I could do it then. But the oak trees. And I haven't done anything to try to, I mean, I don't know if there is anything I can do to try you know, bring those back to better health and not eventually fall down. But I guess I'm just wondering, is is there always something you can be doing to come to come meet the requirements here and say, here's the two times that I tried to do something? Or is it just to say was three, that's just not going to make it? I'm not familiar with trees and saving trees. Brian?
Thanks, Tony. Appreciate your recognition. I had your exact situation when I built our house where there was oak trees that were going to be close to where we built. And so we tried, and I had an arborist out there from the beginning, and he was like, this is kind of like, maybe, maybe not. This tree's already diseased before you even start building. So who knows what the stressiness is going to do. And we, you know, I think last year, the tree was just, it was like branches were falling off and it was, you know, almost going to hit the house. And our worst was finally like, but there was never anything we could have done. We even designed the house kind of around it and used the foundation. But at some point, we had to take it down because it was going to hit the house. And the harvest was pretty sure it was going to fall. I ended up, because this pre-ordnance was in place, I replaced. I mean, I was going to put new trees in anyway, as Alex mentioned, people that care about trying to keep trees want trees anyway. So I've already, I didn't mind replacing them, but by the same token, I don't know that what it would mean to say two documented times or two prior actions performed by the certified arborist. And that had him out to consult like three or four different times. There was never any like specific action we could have taken. Like, there wasn't like some injection medicine we could have given the tree.
There actually is. I mean, you could, I mean, do deep fertilization.
I mean, I don't know. This was my arborist and he was like, yeah, there's nothing we can do except, you know, just keep watching it.
And this tree was. Every oak possible here. I don't know. I didn't specifically challenge him or ask what else could be done, but offer any solution.
So I don't have any examples of what qualifies as mitigation and what doesn't. And that may be if if that's something that you all want further clarification on before you make a recommendation on it. I think that's something where we can ask Carrie to talk with, like, she's in, she's in training right now to become a certified arborist. And I think that's something where it would be a great learning point for all of us to find out more specifically what would qualify as mitigation before we move forward with it. That's that's from hearing all this discussion. That's my thought.
Yeah, I guess the question for her maybe is, you know, is two actions. Is it just multiple trips out from the arborist? As I identified this three years ago, I get my trees trimmed, you know, every year. And, you know, for the last three years now, we've talked about this tree and they don't think anything can be done, or do you have to, you know, go try to inject something just so that you have a demonstrated action?
So you guys want to discuss this one further?
I mean, my basic instinct is that this is kind of cumbersome. And I think that's what we're coming up against. It's like we we can't all be citizen arborists, like everybody constantly managing their personal forest. It's, you know, we have to be honest about, we're we're trying our best for the most part and stuff happens. And, you know, I think that the basic premise of this is we don't want people cutting down a bunch of trees, like big trees. And if you're cutting small trees down because they're competing with a big tree, that should be okay. And so sorry, I'm just, I don't know that I have a point related to any of these other than it seems like it's a lot of stuff to wade through.
Yeah, I think the question on C to me seems to be right now, if you have a diseased tree that dies, you got to replace it. And if it dies in your setback, you got to replace it three X at a quarter of the diameter. So I'll take it to my example. I lost probably a twenty-four inch oak based upon the way the previous house was built and where its roots could have gone. And we lost it. And do I now have to then go buy three relatively expensive trees when I had an arborist out there for two years doing everything we could? I like the idea. I don't know. Maybe we want to let it bake a little bit more, think about it and bring this back up next at our next meeting. We don't have to recommend this tonight if we think that there's more here. I do feel strongly that for the side of the tree we're talking about, it's a little bit of kicking someone when they're down when they're doing best efforts. It's a, it's almost a disincentive. It's like, well, I have to go buy a bunch of expensive trees. I'm not even going to get an arborist. And I spent probably some of the range of two to three thousand dollars over two years trying to save my oak. So I I'm big on it. I think we have calls from the community for this. I I'm happy to say, let's wait, let's all let it marinate for another month and come back with our own language that we think might help make this more effective. And I suspect Councilmember Patillo is is totally fine with letting this continue to go. We don't have to pass it on first reading. So is that, is this an area where we want to actually go back, take a look at it and bring back recommendations next month?
Sure. I I I will say just for, I'm I'm on board with the sentiment behind this. And I would strike some of the additional hoops you have to jump through. I think to Alex's point, the complaints I've heard from the community have all centered around somebody buys the lot, clear cuts it and builds a big house. And that's where all the complaints are. I don't hear any complaints about Jordan had a twenty-four inch diameter oak tree. And I know he loved it and I loved it and we all loved it. And the damn tree died. That sucks. Now I want him to plant four more. I don't think anybody has ever taken that position. And so to me, we need.
Except the current code, Brian.
What's that?
The current code takes that position.
I know. And and that's why I guess I'm just, I'm I'm echoing what I think Alex was saying, which is where we really need to put our focus is on protecting this clear cut situation. And I think a provision like this makes sense because it carves out
Okay.
the existing homeowner scenario with the dead tree. You didn't want your tree to die. I didn't want my tree to die. Making me go plant. And then here's another point that goes to what Tony was saying earlier. And this is not on our list, but like in general, I don't like the idea of saying, okay, you had a twenty-four inch, now you have to do, and it was in the setback. So then it's three times whatever. Because if you're, let's say we're, I bought the house ten years ago and I've been really active about planting lots of trees. I might have reached the maximum capacity for large-scale trees on my lot. You know, it's only a third of an acre or something. And requiring a ton gets into the scenario Tony described that his arborist mentioned, which is you're not going to get big trees if you have too many that are competing in the same square footage.
Yeah, to that note, that's why the whole go plant in the park or another park or another neighbor's yard. It's about the canopy. It's about adding back to the canopy. So doesn't have, Westlake has a pretty strict replant on your lot. Don't care what your canopy is. And we'll look you right in the face and have told friends of mine on Brady Lane, if the trees die, you're going to replant them, even though they're totally in the shade because of their higher, more mature canopy on their lot. I thought Councilmember Patillo did a great job saying, look, we we can plant this on a neighbor's tree with agreement. You can, and it's sorry, a neighbor's yard. And you could plant it at the park. You could plant it as additional green space between our our commercial district and our residential districts over there off of B Cave. There's a lot of other ways you can go and add into it. Which I'm in favor of. I think this needs a little more baking. I think that's the easiest way. I'm not hearing that we're totally against it. We like the sentiment. We we're not ready to pass it tonight is kind of what I'm sensing. So is it okay then to shift on and we'll see if we can come back and having let it marinate for a month, we can talk about it next month? Does that work?
I think that works. Yeah, I just kind of have, I I just question more this two documented prior actions and, you know, it just seems if I've hired a certified arborist and the city arborist is reviewing their recommendation, isn't that enough?
Well, let's come back next month with some language around that. About trying to, the two documented actions. If you have a certified arborist and they're making a recommendation or or said, yep, tree died. They didn't hack the roots out. They didn't cut off, you know, three quarters of it and, you know, kill it. It died. We tried, it died. And I like, I personally like the no fee, no requirement to replant, although I think a lot of people will anyways. That's my personal take on it. Carrie had a good point about a thirty-five dollar fee, just because someone in the city is going to have to read that report, check the, you know, the city arborist has to check all that. Their time does come at a cost. So she had a very modest thirty-five dollars just for the city arborist time. The two inches. What's that?
What's the normal fee?
I don't know. Is that in there?
I believe it's a hundred dollars to have the city arborist review.
And and Nash, you know, that David Smith has blown my phone up like five times on this thing. So he's got a sick tree. And I I've heard it from him mostly, but I do think there are people out there affected by this. So let's circle back around on it next time. Let's see if we can get some language that we like. And can we move on to D? Are you guys comfortable with that?
Yeah, Jordan, I was just going to say one more, one more thing.
Sure.
Mr. Mill. You know, I think I think the approach that, you know, that the city of Austin took, right or wrong, and it sounds like it's, you know, different than Westlake. So I'm not suggesting for a moment that, you know, that the city of Austin's, you know, solution is the only solution. But I I think they generally took the approach that, you know, we want to try to we want to try to protect special trees. And I'm I'm making this number up. But so we're going to, we're going to find a way to protect or mitigate, you know, the top five percent in terms of the size of a protected, of the protected trees. So so as I compare that to sort of going back to this twelve inch standard, I I mean, my my guess is that that represents, you know, again, this is just a guess. My guess is it's it's at least fifty percent. you know, again, this is just a guess, my guess is it's at least 50% of the trees in Rowlandwood. It's certainly, at least in my yard, I went out with a tape measure while we were talking and, I mean, I bet, I bet three quarters of the trees in my yard are greater than 12 inches. And so it just sort of goes to, you know, the intent, and I guess we just all need to decide what the intent of this ordinance is.
Well, and unlike Austin, ours is looking at 12 inches and of a certain species.
Well, no, Austin's does the same thing.
Yeah, Austin's now gone any species, they've switched, it's now diameter only.
That's ridiculous.
Yeah, I've not, I've not seen that. That would be, that would be a surprise to me.
Yeah, caught it from two arborists this week. Like, it is diameter only. It, if it's a hackberry, too bad, so sad.
Most hackberries don't make it to 12 inches. I would argue that most trees that do make it to 12 inches are pretty good survivalists in this climate, so I could kind of see the argument for that.
China berries definitely go over 12 inches.
Oh, they do?
Yeah, I've had huge ones in our yards. In fact, there's one that was leaning over my property from a neighbor for the first three years, driven, monster.
One of the great ironies about Austin, Austin's tree ordinance is that, you can't take down a pecan. They won't, the city of Austin won't accept a pecan in their public right of way or anywhere in their parks.
That's awesome. Can't take it down, but don't plant it. Jordan, you want to move on from this C provisions? I'm kind of in favor of what's here. But I defer to the commission, if everybody else wants to defer to next month, that's fine. I know that when I had to replace this tree, it would have been nice to have the comfort of this exception in there, back when I had to deal with this a year and a half ago. But if we want to wait another month, I'm fine with that too. If I was going to do this, what I would propose we do is what Amy has here under this section, I would remove the clause that says, and that the certified arborist has documented at least two prior actions performed by the certified arborist within the previous three years mitigated condition. I delete that provision, that proviso. So then it basically requires that the homeowner have a certified arborist certify the condition and that the city arborist verifies it. And if the city arborist agrees, then it's within the city arborist's control to waive the replacement tree requirement and waive the fee. If Carrie would prefer that instead of it being a complete waiver, since this is a discretionary thing, we can make it open-ended and let her have the ability to charge a smaller fee and/or a lesser requirement in terms of replacement. Those would be the adjustments I propose we make. I'm happy if the commission would like to address that next month, we'll do it then, but that's, if we wanted to get something done, that's what I would put in.
All right, if the $35 fee is also an issue of just simply helping to pay staff and arborists, I think that, I might have suggested this before, that sort of the people who have paid a penalty for whatever reason, cutting down a tree that's protected, that that go into a coffer that covers those expenses. So that you save the person the penalty fee for not having done anything deserving of a penalty.
Okay.
If we worded it as the city arborist may, has the discretion to reduce and/or waive the replacement tree and requirements and fees, that I'm fine with ceding some power to our city arborist on this one. In this limited circumstance, if for the discussion.
Brian, I like that better. Alex, we might have issues with regard to, once, if we issue a ticket, then how those fines are applied and where we can allocate those fines. So I like Brian's idea of the ability to reduce.
That seems cleaner.
Or waive.
So city arborist may reduce or waive the replacement tree requirement and, for the protected tree, and reduce or waive the tree replacement application fee? And get rid of the line that says, and that the certified arborist has documented at least two prior actions, et cetera. Okay. I think that's clean and it meets the goal of the intention of not kicking someone when they've tried to save a tree and it's down and they've been working with an arborist who can write a letter. I mean, an arborist, still a couple 300 bucks for them to come out and write this letter, so they're not avoiding fees by any means. So that's fine. Are we good on that, Jamil?
Sorry, say it again?
Jamil, are you happy with Brian's suggested changes that we make it simply if a certified arborist writes a letter to the city arborist, sort of testifying that this tree was diseased or dying or needed to be removed for emergency purposes, the city arborist can reduce or waive the requirement to replace the tree and reduce or waive the application fee?
Yeah, I think that's reasonable. I think city of Austin's got something similar.
Okay. Yeah, all right. Well, I think we've come to a good solution then on C. Do we need a break, y'all? We're an hour and a half in almost. Do we need to take a quick bio break? For anybody who want to keep trucking, how do we want to handle it?
I'm good to keep going if it means I could get done in time to cut the kids in.
Yeah, I'm with you. We're only at C. We have a big agenda still to go. Although we can postpone quite a bit of that.
We're not going to be able to make it too much longer, yeah.
Yeah.
We might lose forum.
Pardon?
We may lose forum.
No, I'm, guys, I think I have until about eight o'clock, at which point I'm going to start having technical difficulties, so. All right, let's look at D real quick. It's page 15 in your packet. And you'll see there, kind of near the top, Amendment D, AP 10, Amy's 10th comment. Can't remove a tree without a tree removal permit during removal. Where are we going to display the thing? Amy suggests displaying it on a construction board for the site at present or otherwise be displayed on a sign within the first five feet of the front yard setback. Carrie suggested on the permit board or on the dash of the tree trimmer's car. Do we have any thoughts on either?
I'll just say, this is Amy, her comment regarding the dash, we, when we were having our telephone conversation, we were kind of going back and forth on it and I think she had to go check something, and I think the dash is more customary. So for the, if there's not a construction board or a permit board already up.
Correct. If they're going to be trimming trees, that's where we tell them to post that tree trimming permit.
So that makes sense to me, either on the construction board or in the front dash.
Okay. Speaking on behalf of others, I've heard the issue here is less police enforcement and more that neighbors are aware that there's a permit. So I think if the police stop by and want to check a permit, they'll know to look on the dash. If a neighbor's upset and comes out and wants to see the permit, they may not know it's customary to be on the dash. They would expect for it to be posted. So I am only repeating what's been said to me, I don't have strong feelings on this.
I mean, I'm not going to have a construction board on my property if I have to take one down right now. So we have to have some kind of practical mechanism for people that have houses already, this isn't a job site. I think the dash is what we're doing for tree trimming, and that's what we can do here.
Tony?
Sounds good.
Alex, you good with that?
Yep.
Jamil, you fine with that?
Really, probably proxy to Ashley and the others that have to, have to figure out how to enforce this.
Perfect. Let's go with, let's go with then, Brian, if you got like during removal, protected trees, the tree removal permits should have been displayed on the construction board for the site if present or otherwise be displayed on the dash of the, what? What did Carrie say? Sorry, let me go back to what she said. Or in the dashboard of an arborist vehicle if the property is not under construction permit. That's the amended language she has.
That's fine. I will point out, technically, I don't think you're required to use a certified arborist just to remove a tree. You have to use a lawn or a tree trimming company that is insured and registered with the city. Whatever that appropriate language would be, I don't think they have to be arborists, so.
You want to change that to permitted vendor?
Yeah. Sounds good. This, by the way, is how we get inconsistencies in our code, is, I just kind of, I think it's permitted vendor, and then we throw things in like that. Clean it up later.
All right, we'll put it permitted vendor with to be cleaned before proposed to council. Remember, we get to make the recommendation, they get to actually pass the bad code.
Right. All right. Item E?
Item E. Let me go back to it here. Mailed notice requirements.
And it was back on the same page we were just on, I believe, right? In terms of where it gets implemented in the code.
It's at the top of page eight, number two, and I, I took what Councilmember Hudson had put in the agenda item that she had at the council agenda. And there, I asked during the council meeting for clarification of whether we were talking about a radius, how do you figure out who's adjacent? And I just went ahead and just included the language exactly that was in the agenda item.
Does, do any of the property owners have any recourse or power or anything? It's just to make them their tailspin or just?
I'm going to go on record and just say I don't like this provision, so.
I mean, if there's some value to be gained, like can a neighbor stop somebody from taking down a tree, then yeah, I would say no, to notify them, but if there's nothing that can be gained, I'm not sure.
Alex puts her finger on the issue. All we're doing is like, I mean, for what purpose? So that people start clamoring and, because there's no mechanism here, Alex, for protesting the removal of the tree. And I, we've got a lot of hoops we've got to jump through on the tree ordinance. I think we don't need to start requiring a certified nailing to the neighbors that we're getting around. If you're a good neighbor, you're a good neighbor and you're probably already talking to people about this issue. If it, if it's really going to affect them, but by the same token, like, look, I'm following the rules and picking out the tree, I'm putting in four new ones. I don't know. I just, I don't, I don't feel like this is going to do anything other than get people all filed up.
But nobody ever gets filed up in Rowlandwood. It's like a lot to me, too, I would agree with that.
I, I'll further Brian's one step forward of making a recommendation that we do not include notification privileges of neighbors within the ordinance. As we're making recommendations, that the council can still do it, my recommendation on this, rather than no recommendation, I would actively suggest that they do not put that in the ordinance.
You've articulated it more precisely than I did. I agree with your position on that, Jordan.
How do we feel on Tony, Alex and Jamil about making a recommendation they do not put notification requirements of neighbors in the ordinance?
I agree.
Agree.
Okay.
Yep, same.
All right. So for E, the recommendation, do not recommend. Okay. We've learned the hard way, if we don't make an active recommendation, then nothing happens. So at the very least, we'll recommend that this doesn't happen. F, critical root zone calculation. Building official Kaler. Where did she have that?
It's on page 14.
Yeah, now I'm looking at her. Okay, so page 14. Pull it up.
So, Jordan, I don't see that Carrie included this in her-
No.
Recommendation, but during our conversation, like the conversation that Wendy and Carrie and I had to go through all this, she was wanting more clarification there, and so-
She said that in the past, yeah.
Yeah, so I made an initial attempt at looking at language and trying to put something in here that we could then get recommendations from an arborist on. I don't, I don't know that she determined it, I just, I used the definition of how to determine a root system based on different literature found online, and proposed the initial percentage based on different recommendations that are made online as to what placement of, over a root system may lead to the decline of the tree. But it doesn't sound like she weighed in on this one. At this point, we don't have a clear definition of what this means. It's similar probably to the excessive pruning where it's, it's more of an arborist who's, who's helping someone figure out how to replace a tree and what qualifies as replaced earth is removal of a tree. It's, it's them in their professional position evaluating whether the root system is going to reasonably cause the tree to die if the placement occurs as it's being proposed. So it would just, it would basically give a little more clarity. Right now, it's just more of a, an arborist or a resident making that determination on their own based on their, an arborist, their professional opinion.
I'm having trouble tracking where this is in the code, I'm sorry. What number page is it?
It's page 14 at the top left.
Sorry, what was that?
Says page 14 at the top left of the-
Yeah.
And it starts at number seven.
Okay. I'm just, I don't, maybe I'm in the wrong document, I mean, like it has a number 1 through 13, the document that I'm in. It's Amy Patillo's commented version of the code with these provisions.
Oh, okay, they're talking about the packet though, Brian.
Brian's probably in the HTML version. Is anybody else in that version? I'm with Brian, I'm having a little-
Get over the PDF, y'all.
Well, just give me a code section, what section is it, and I'll find it.
It is in section, oh boy, you got to go up.
But I agree, the critical root zone, there are different definitions of that. I don't, I, I think if we're going to take some time to consider other parts of the ordinance, maybe we also take some time to think about that because there are different definitions of root zones. And what's critical and what's, you know, I don't know all the terminology, but.
Brian, it's, it's section 107, Brian, it's section 107-371 definitions, and you're going to go all the way down to-
Removal E123B, and then for purposes of determining the total root system.
3B, correct. All right. Yeah, guys, I'm fine to wait on this. Yeah, guys, I'm fine to wait on this. I'm, I'm, I'm fine to wait on root zone if we need to. It is a complicated. I mean, we have pages on. Yeah, the root zone is a lot.
And I would say that it's different for different trees also, you know, in, different trees grow different ways, you know, some grow down, some grow very much at the surface and so. Critical root zone doesn't apply to all the trees equally. And this almost sounds like, I mean, if it's like a 12 inch tree, then it's an 18 foot critical root zone if I'm, if my math is good.
And I think.
12 inch diameter tree.
Yes, I think the word critical root zone gets conflated with another term of the root zone. And really what we're trying to capture is just like the smallest part of the root zone. So I think we need to take some time and educate ourselves. About, oh, Tony, about the true root zone that we're trying to protect. What, you know, what does that mean? And Carrie hints at not information about that because apparently there is a distinction.
So my two cents on this real quick is that we match whatever Austin does because that's the training that the majority of arborists get in. And like every other thing, they're going to come here and tell us what the city of Austin says, and then we'll say, no, it's actually different for Rollingwood. They'll ignore us and then they're going to get sideways. Sorry, I'm a little bit cynical about some of this stuff. I would, my recommendation is we copy Austin. If we want critical root zone, go with our biggest neighbor, copy their code.
So currently it just says placing fixtures over root system to the extent that the placement of fixtures causes or may be reasonably expected to cause the tree to die. And the proposal is to add the more than 50% and then the definition below it.
I would encourage the commission just to, let's, let's educate everybody on what critical root zones mean and what the different root zones mean before we like address any of that. Is that okay, Amy? Or what do you think?
Well, to address Tony's question, yeah, Tony, currently it is a generic definition that says placing fixtures over the root system to the extent that the placement of the fixtures causes or may be reasonably expected to cause the tree to die. That's what constitutes removal. And so the discussion was, do we need a, do we need a definition? Like a little more structure so that people know what measurements to use. And I think right now it is. It's relying on the arborist or land paper or whoever is, is helping somebody with their replacement tree evaluation and their, their removal and their replacement to help them. Make sure that they don't put things over the tree root system that's going to cause the tree to die.
Well, isn't that who's going to be deciding as opposed to, you know, all of us that don't know anything about trees?
It is.
I, I, I want to jump in. I feel like we're codifying so much, like. I'm way more comfortable with leaving this thing to the discretion of professionals. And especially if you have a arborist. Why, why do we have to codify what constitutes the critical root zone as the current science believes it to be like? You know, like we just saw for the replacement tree in an emergency situation where we discussed that. If you've got a certified arborist that says. This tree died of disease and not because of the root zone, and then the city arborist comes in and says, I concur. I think we're good, right? And, and that would apply there. To do that sort of waiver provision that we just talked about. I think the same thing should happen here where, okay. You've submitted a site plan. You're wanting to remove these trees, but I see that on your tree survey, there's these two that are that close to the house. Our city arborist has determined that that would be effectively a removal of that tree. Because of her experience in that area. I, it just like, I don't.
That sounds good. Yeah. Rather than defining root zone. Yeah, I like that.
I just don't want this to get too complicated because that creates a sense of disputes and confusion. And then too many people are in here arguing with us about what the right standard should be. And it's like, well. You know, we've got somebody hired. Now, I will say that I recognize there's a downside to this, which is. If you end up with a building official and people think that they're being inconsistent or a city arborist, they're being inconsistent.
Right.
Then disputes over that, but we've got to put our trust in certified professionals to make these kind of calls for us. And not, not a code.
I agree. I think what we want as a city is people getting an expert, a tree expert, an arborist involved. To make this determination. To me, that's what we should be shooting for.
Yeah, in theory you have two professionals. You've got the property owner's arborist. And then you've got your city arborist. And between the two of them, if they've arrived at a conclusion, then I, I don't know why we need to. Put parameters around what that should be. I'm fine to table it though too, Jordan.
Well, maybe we should table it into a get appropriate language that follows what Commissioner Nash is saying. I like that, you know. How he's wording that. And so I think. As far as staff goes, I think we would prefer direction from. P and Z as far as around what you were saying, Commissioner Nash. I, I think that, that was good. Running through critical root zone.
Alex, Jamil, any thoughts?
I agree with the sentiment. Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, I agree with the sentiment. I'm. Alex first, how about that?
I agree with what Brian and Amber are both saying, so I'm good with that.
Jamil?
Yeah, I, I, I agree and, you know, a little bit with the overarching sentiment, which is I'm, I'm, I'm a little bit worried. We're starting to over regulate here. And, you know, if this thing becomes too burdensome, you know, you'll, you'll see people cutting down trees when they get to, you know, 11 inches or. You know, there's, there's, there could be a reaction to it if we, if we don't find the right balance.
Yeah.
If it's hard for us to read through, it's going to be hard for everybody.
So do you guys want a recommendation, an active recommendation rather than tabling it, which doesn't, which Charlie can correct me if I'm wrong. If we are, if we. Don't recommend it, they can still address it because we've given recommendations. So if we don't address it.
Well, this isn't, yeah, this isn't, well, this isn't a zoning ordinance, so the same, the same recommendation requirements don't apply.
Oh. So they can pass and pass whether we say yes or no?
Correct.
Okay. So why don't we give an active recommendation that the city council do not pass critical root zone at this time? Are you guys comfortable with that?
Yes.
Okay.
Jordan, can I clarify? Are you saying not to, not to pass the amendment to leave it as it is? Or.
Let me see what the, sorry, let me go back to it. Sorry, the.
I would say maybe placing fixtures over the root system. To the extent that.
Yeah, if you kill it and by building. Arborists will come in and say, no, we don't think that killed it. It was the fungus or oak wilt. And the city arborist can say, you built right up to the base of an oak tree. So. I think if leave it as is, is that? Just in the great, was B inserted or is B? Placing fixtures over the root system to the extent that the placement of fixtures causes or maybe reasonably expected to cause the tree to die. I mean, Brian, I gotta defer to you. Do you think that's strong enough or, or, or can, is that going to be, cause more issues than it fixes?
Well, the existing language is what you just read. So the, the amendment would be to add more than 50% of the total. And then to add the other underlined portion that's below there, but B is in there right now. With the, with the more than 50% of the total just has a V there. It just doesn't have the, for the purposes of determining the total root system definition.
And Brian, your take on it? Okay.
Stafford recommends what is currently in code.
Hey, can I, can I ask a kind of a random question? Could, could this not all be captured in? The concept of taking an owner, taking any action that in the reasonable discretion of a certified arborist caused the tree to die? Yeah, I feel like, I feel like we're getting into the weeds of placing fixtures over 50% of the total root system. I mean, I, you know, we're gonna, we're, we're gonna have the whole city standing around a tree with their tape measures, trying to, trying to figure out what that means.
Yeah, I kind of, I kind of thought we introduced the concept of, of the expert weighing in. So whether that's placement of fixtures causes. Or maybe reasonably expected, you know, to cause the tree to die, you know. Per the opinion of a certified arborist or, you know, something along those lines.
Okay.
Are we having specific issues with this code? Is that why we're talking about it? Is Carrie having trouble?
We're having zero issues with this code. It's just been brought to us by. Like probably two people in the community. Staff's actual recommendation was to just let this go for a while and because it's not even a year old. So we wanted to see how everything played out, but we're not having any issues. We're getting a handful of complaints, like.
Sorry.
Right. We're getting two complaints about the way that the ordinance is, and that's it. Amy and Wendy did a good job, great job, fantastic job drafting this. That would be reasonable. And staff. Their recommendation was to just keep it as is. But, you know, Amy has worked hard to try to appease some of those different voices that were. Coming at her to try to change the tree ordinance, but we feel like it's working great. There. Everybody in Rollingwood is trying to comply. They're not cutting down their trees. They're. We have had one complaint about someone who tried to treat his tree for a long time and then it died. But we don't feel like it's overly burdensome to replace that tree. It's not. I mean, maybe $200 at the most between application fee and. And the tree. But, you know, some might feel like that's burdensome. I, I don't know. We, we try to be reasonable, but that, that's kind of where, that's always what Carrie has advised. And finally she worked up some, a few recommendations and working with Amy and Amy's worked hard to appease everybody. Who has come at her, but that's where staff is.
Well, that's actually some of the most useful information of any of this because. You know, we're just sort of presented with this and we feel compelled to talk about it and discuss it, but to know what the status really is, is super helpful. So, I mean, maybe we can talk less about it if, if this is working.
Yeah, I, I would leave this specific section the way it is. I, I will say there's, I thought it should probably be reasonably instead of reasonable, but I don't think that's necessarily something we need to fix right now.
That's not one thing, but I'll say thumbs up. Yeah.
I'm here to pick all the typos.
Amy, is this helpful?
Yeah, it's extremely helpful. It was, it was something that Carrie had been kind of asked to clarify once. I've been asked to clarify. And I, I mean, we, we took an attempt at throwing something out there to see if anybody wanted it further clarified. I, I think. Like I said, the ordinance was written to place the onus on the property owner to. Put some of the costs of doing this and then to pay for the city arborist to review it. And so there's experts reviewing it and. I think you guys are making decisions in view of that perspective. So, thank you.
And kudos to Amy and Wendy. This ordinance is really thoughtful. I think it. I've heard no complaints other than from one person in Rollingwood about complying with this ordinance. So that's been our experience.
Off topic a little bit, but if I do a Freedom of Information Act to get all of your emails related to this, can we find out who that person is and ask them to sit on P and Z so that they can go through this?
I don't think he submitted complaints in writing, unfortunately.
Tricky.
Right. They have been channeled through a multitude of people to us, but. Yeah, other than that, we haven't experienced, most people in Rollingwood also share their love of the tree canopy. And the way Amy and Wendy wrote this legislation captures that and their. Their tree plans always comply. They're always happy to comply with this. It's not an issue.
And I'll say this for the record, and then, and then I think we have our recommendation. We lost our big oak tree because we didn't know what the hell we were doing. We were not tree experts. We didn't understand critical root zones and our contractor dug a trench across the critical root zone of a tree and killed it. And it, it's one of those that had I known what I know now, I would have been very upset at the time when it happened. And you can kill a tree faster by messing with its roots than messing with its canopy. So if we care about canopy, we got to care about the roots. I will defer though to. The commission saying, if you do something that kills the tree in the estimation of the city arborist, then you got to replace it, which we did. So I'm not worried about that either. So. I am.
I, I want to just tag. I want to tag on to your point because I think. That even I building a house who's used to this and watching every detail, it still happens what happened to you. And, you know, somebody decides where the lines are going to go and they don't communicate it. And the next thing you know, they've been digging. And so maybe there's, needs to be a step ahead of that that. Forces the contractors to read something and sign something that say they understand. That these issues can impact trees or something along those lines because that's not necessarily. On the owner unless it's on the owner to provide it to the contractor, but. Stuff like that happens.
Yeah, I, I'm not going to force this ordinance to educate. Everybody out there about critical root zones. I, I now know what I didn't know then, but. It, it, it's just frustrating. It is, you know, people look at live oaks as sort of bulletproof. Drive a truck across their roots and all that stuff and they're really not is the problem. So let's, let's move on from it. I think we've got G. We have a don't pass at this time, or sorry, keep as is. Let me erase this real quick. And then we're on the downhill stretch. Ken, I, I gotta, I want to check with the committee here. We're, we're through G. We still have more stuff in our agenda and it's eight o'clock. We can do a couple of things here. We can make recommendations on the one we've talked about. We can table it, make no recommendation. There's been a public meeting. Arguably, city council could go forward. We could ask them not to, to give us another month to go through the second half of these. How does the commission want to proceed? Keep trucking?
We're almost done with this list. I'd say we just knock out this list and then we'll make the recommendation based on what's in there.
Okay. The rest of y'all good with that?
I'm biased because the next item is the one I suggested, so.
And that's, that's one I wanna talk about too.
Let's get on to H then. This one involves protected species, defining the types, uh, getting rid of cedar elm, A freaking men. Hate them.
I will note, Jordan, that, that list that you sent from City of Austin's code on what it considers to be the heritage trees that they protect. It lists nine tree types that are the same nine that we have. The one that it doesn't include is cedar elm.
I don't know that cedar elms get that big.
I got one.
They grow fast and they're brittle trees. And from every arborist I've talked to, they've been like, that's a trash tree. You should take that out. And I'm like, it's huge. It's got this great thing. And they're like, that's gonna fall down on your house in about three or five years. Next windstorm, just wait for it. And I'm like, well, it's over 12 inches, so I can do it. I just don't, I mean, it's not. I'm trying to keep the tree anyway because I like where it is. But I don't think that these are trees that we should put on a protective.
I consider it to be a tree that's, has a very high percentage in Rollingwood, um, more than the oaks. And it's a highly adaptable tree. It does well. It grows tall. It provides lots of shade. And I think that if you start saying it's okay to cut down all the cedar elms, that's the end of the canopy because I, I really believe it's a high percentage of the canopy. It's also a very resistant tree. Um, you know, it doesn't require a lot of water. So, um, I'm definitely gonna push back on this one. Sorry.
I've hit, I gotta admit, I've hit my limit, y'all. How do y'all want to proceed?
Yeah, Alex, I was, you know, I was gonna say, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm just not a fan of cedar elms either. They, they consume a tremendous amount of water too. But just not my favorite tree, brittle, allergies, all that. I feel like every windstorm, you'll see a ton of cedar elm tree branches in yards. They're like really brittle trees. And I, I don't know that it's healthy for them to get that big, but they do.
Yeah, I've had several. I've had to remove after falling down after storms at round properties as well.
So y'all good? Alex, help, help clarify. Do you wanna keep them or you want, or do you find getting, taking those off the list?
I, I would say to keep it on the list.
Okay.
But, you know, you guys can overrule me, but I, I think it would be, you know, I think that the 12-inch rule has a good place in this argument about cedar elms. And I think that the smaller cedar elms are not, you know, protected under 12 inches. And, but I think when you start to get a tree that big, they grow so tall and their canopy is really broad that, um, I just feel like it should stay on that list.
Okay.
There's, there's the potential, Alex, that let's say you have a cedar elm near a, an oak tree. I think the problem that you end up with in that scenario, and I'm not a tree expert, but this is what an arborist described to me. The cedar elm grows taller faster and then overtakes the oak, but is a less, but has less longevity. So the cedar elm ends up choking out the oak and keeping it from growing quickly. And then it's like a 20-year tree, whereas the oak is, I mean, we've seen oaks that are 100 years, right? And so it's almost to the detriment of the longevity of a canopy in favor of, and this is why I think cities will plant cedar elms along streets because they don't require as much of a root base. Because I think they, they don't expand, you know, their, their root ball doesn't expand very far. But that, by the same reason, that's why they come down so quick and are so brittle in storms and things like that. So I would argue that while there may be some cedar elm trees that right now have a high canopy, if they got removed, I think it would be to the benefit of whatever other protected trees might be on that property.
Well, if you are giving that scenario, I.
Go ahead.
In that scenario, I agree with you. That is a true statement that the cedar elm is going to grow faster and overtake the oak. And if that's the case, then, then maybe there's an argument that the cedar comes, elm comes out in that situation. But just taking down cedar elms because you don't like them, you know, I don't, I would like to see it protected, but I also agree with the value of the oak versus the elm.
I, I guess what I, the other point I wanna make, and I, I hear what you're saying, Alex. I think there's a difference between sort of what the baseline on what this ordinance should protect and what we all do in practice. Because I think before we even had the ordinance, you had a substantial portion of our community that cared enough about trees and preserving them that you didn't really need this ordinance. Because we all want the canopy for the most part, and it's in our best interest to keep it as an individual property owner. So, for example, I've got a cedar elm that I built a deck around because I like it so much and the great canopy it provides and the shade. All I'm just trying to do is just make sure, and I've got a hackberry that I think actually grades my privacy. I don't wanna, and, and my neighbor and I would probably agree that hackberry is an important piece between the two of us. So I'm not gonna take down these trees deliberately just because I can. But I do think that we need to make sure when we're drawing a boundary on what we're actually gonna penalize people for, it should only be for trees that are, you know, kind of considered in this upper tier level of quality. And that's what I think is reflected by the Austin Nine. Now I'm starting to brand, so I'm gonna call it the Austin Nine as something that's been validated by a large city that's spent a lot of time thinking about it. And so I'm hesitant to expand beyond the Austin Nine.
I had a neighbor cut down 26 trees and where, what I used to look at was a complete tree canopy with a large house under it. 26 trees were wiped out and a lot of those were cedar elms. And it, it dramatically altered, you know, the setting, to say the least. And so now I'm planting bamboo to try and get, you know, canopy and shade and all of these things back that were wiped out by these trees. And so, um, I, I hear what you're saying. I think that the house I'm referring to is also an instigator for this ordinance in the first place. And I think that we have to try and promote smart building, that we don't just clear a lot like you would in a, you know, suburban development, that you have to be artful and try to protect the trees, which I think is, is the essence of this ordinance to begin with. And so I don't know how you thread that needle to sort of do what you're talking about. And, you know, I'd love for Amy to weigh in on what was their intent when they put the cedar elm on this list? If she is wanting to do that.
Sure. So we used the City of Austin's Protected Species Tree List at the time that we drafted the ordinance. And I did, I did talk to Carrie about it. She felt like it's still a tree that she would like to see stay on the list. But I do think that an evaluation of the trees is always something that's worth having a conversation about. And, uh, I hadn't looked up the average life of the different trees that are on there, but I did just look at preservationtree.com. And, um, so the cedar elm is included as an example of a long-lived tree variety on, on, and not a short-lived tree. But among the long-lived trees, the cedar elm has an average of 100-plus years, whereas the American elm has a 300 years, um, live oak is 300 years, white oak is 600, pecan is 300. So in, among the long-lived tree varieties, it is in the 100-plus year variety and not in the 300 plus. But it's not considered a short-lived tree, at least in the list I'm looking at.
Sure. And I'll, I'll admit, I'm going off the anecdotal comments of my arborist. So he could be wrong or, or lying to me. So I don't know.
The one tree that my yard that we spent a lot of time trying to save and then it ultimately got blown over during a windstorm was a cedar elm. So it, it got really tall. I, everything you're saying I've experienced. But I don't, I, I feel like, uh, I'd like to hear from some of the arborists that are in our city before I would personally wanna remove a tree from the list. And also get a recommendation from planning and zoning and others to look at it like that.
Jamil, Tony, any thoughts?
I've gotten the same feedback. I had to take down a really big cedar elm when, um, we added onto our house and added a pool. And the arborist indicated that he expected that my oaks would do better after the cedar elm was gone. But yeah, I didn't get into much beyond that. It was, it was coming down either way, so.
I think this, my, my understanding is this, this ordinance was maybe not solely, but largely driven by the specific scenario you laid out, Alex. And I think, you know, I'm not gonna speak for Amy, but my understanding is that it was, you know, in large part meant to be, you know, a somewhat delicate hand to deal with egregious exceptional situations by and large. You know, the development I've seen has tried, you know, to manage around trees. And unfortunately was, you know, maybe the best lot and the best trees in the neighborhood and they kept them all down.
I'm looking at the Austin Code and it's got cedar elm in it. So that thing I sent around, Brian, they may have changed it, but the original code had cedar elm in it for heritage tree.
Okay, the thing you said did not. There's only reason why they call it the Austin Nine.
It's for the Austin Nine, short-lived.
Short-lived. I don't know. I, look, I'm fine tabling this. I'm fine discussing it further. But I'll, I'll admit that when this subject first came up, and I don't know when it was, I have poor frame of reference now, two years ago, and there was talk about it. I, I, I think what happened next to you, Alex, is terrible and it's unfortunate. And I was sympathetic to the situation and I think that we should figure out ways to kind of protect against something. But I also am hesitant to start codifying extensive provisions that, I mean, that's kind of like a once in a while, you know. I just, I, I, I'm concerned that we're getting too much regulation on this issue. And so I was initially like, oh, I don't think we should do anything at all on trees. I don't think most people are gonna do this. But I've been convinced that I think the tree ordinance makes sense and that it's working. I have gotten feedback from neighbors on the cedar elm thing. So it's not just like my own pet project that I created. It was mostly motivated by other people mentioning this and then my confirmation with the arborists that I've talked with. I have cedar elms that I like, that I'm keeping, that I want. So not looking to go chop down any mine. I just wanna make sure that we're making, we're doing protected status for important thing, important trees.
Real quick, cause he's on the phone. Jamil, do you wanna chime in? Do you have anything you wanna add?
You know, I'm, I'm at the same place as Brian on, on the species. I don't, I don't believe that it is deserving of being protected. And I'm, I'm also, you know, trying to make sure we're finding the right balance between, you know, uh, property rights and, and, uh, and a predictable process while also protecting our trees. Super sympathetic to Alex's situation. And I'm not, uh, I, I don't know the, the diameter of each of those trees that were taken down. But, you know, it sounds like.
I have the site plan.
You do? Yeah. And it, and it sounds like, at least in some situations, and this, this may or may not be applicable to Alex's, but, uh, in some situations, it's, it's not necessarily just the diameter or the species, but it is kind of the totality of, and I don't think there's any way for us to really address that, right? I mean, if you've got, you know, if you've got 15 trees that are all, you know, 11 inches and, uh, you know, whether they're, you know, cedar elms or live oaks, if they're creating a nice canopy and separation from one neighbor to the other, you know, we, you know, we have to hope that, that people will use good judgment. And in, at least in this one case, it sounds like that, that didn't happen.
So I, um, my two cents on it, thank you, Jamil. I appreciate you putting it in there. My two cents on it are I'm highly allergic to them, so I almost feel like I should abstain because I have a visceral, visceral response to cedar elms. But, um, you know, if they're numerous in Rollingwood and they're providing canopy, the goal of it is to save canopy. You wanna remove it. Nobody's saying you can't remove it. You gotta plant three other species either on your lot or somewhere else. So I'll be honest, I don't have a problem with being in there as much as I hate that species personally. So by my take on it tonight, it's sort of three for taking it out, two for leaving it in. Do we wanna just sort of give no guidance? Do we wanna give guidance to consider removing it and leave it up to council? I mean, remember, it's not in our laps to have to decide whether it's in or out. We're making a recommendation to council.
It sounded like Amy was suggesting that we might revisit, uh, the arborist's recommendation and take that onus off of us.
Okay. So your suggestion is, uh?
And I think the count is four to one, actually, not three to two.
I mean, this is Amy. Y'all can, y'all can take a vote and make a recommendation. I'm, I'm just letting you know that I, I wanna hear from an arborist before I would remove it and understand how that would impact the canopy in the city. So I, um, I think there would be additional information I would want in addition to y'all's recommendation.
And I would argue with the expensive, um, sort of characterization of removing that tree, it's, it's really not expensive. It's, the way Amy and Wendy wrote this code, it's not expensive. It's, it's really what y'all would probably do anyway. That's, that's the way this code is written. So I just, I wanna be careful and making sure y'all know it's not cost prohibitive. I mean, I hate to say that any fee is not cost prohibitive, but it really is not. Amy, add to this. I mean, it's not, it's reasonable.
Well, I think, I think the onus.
I can turn it off.
Depending on where it is.
And it's not overly onus, right? That's, that's the point. It's not overly onus. You could accomplish this with, with $200. Um, that's, that's why staff is like, this is kind of working because it's not overly onus on the builder or the staff. Um, but it seems like it protects the trees and it seems like people can be happy. Um, it, it just really, Amy and Wendy just really just did a good job on this ordinance. Um,
All right. So let's call the question here, y'all. Um, my, my straw poll here is Jamil, Tony and Brian say remove it. Alex and Jordan are saying fine to leave it in. Do we want to make a recommendation? They consider removing it. Council member Patilla has already said, I'm not gonna, I'm not really in favor of even looking at a recommendation for that until we have additional information. Are we good with that as a way to proceed?
I think we should just pass on our vote, Gordon.
Okay.
I mean, it's not dispositive.
Recommend remove cedar elm with a vote of three to two. Do we need to put that in the record or can we just say that? I think we can just say it.
We just said it. Tony, were you trying to say something?
Oh, you're muted, Tony. Still muted, Tony. We can't hear you, bud.
Sorry. Um, I think, yeah, I think we could just tell them that we, uh, discussed it. We recommend that, that they uh, discuss it with a, an arborist and get additional feedback as they weigh our vote.
Awesome. I like it.
I'll just comment that I really appreciate it when our board and the commissions take vote and when people just vote the way that they feel. And so I appreciate y'all taking the opportunity and even when we have disagreement, having respectful this conversation. And I think if anything, it shows that this is an issue where perhaps, um, we should look at it some more because there's, there's viewpoints on both sides.
Um, it wasn't on the agenda, but can we put in something that you have to cut down all American juniper, also known as cedar? We just got to get rid of that across the entire town. Kill all cedar? No, Alex isn't buying that one? I hate that more than cedar elm. So, um, all right. Well, I think we got our-
No, because you can remove a good portion of it, but it's still native habitat. So removing all of it would be a mistake. I agree. You can greatly reduce the load.
I, I was kidding. Even if we took it all out. The whole neighborhoods around us are still going to make December and January miserable. So it is what it is. Um, all right. I think we've got a three to two on this one. Um, I think Amy and I will be able to describe to council what we were thinking. And I like Sonny's request that they consider discussing an arborist, whether or not that one should remain in. Sound good?
I'm going to have to step away, like for good, so.
Okay. Uh, is there anything you want to say about cherry laurels before you leave?
I thought that was a good ad.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, anything about demolishing and, uh, demo permits and tree permits being issued in conjunction with each other?
From Councilmember Hudson, I-
Yeah.
Thought there was some value in that.
Okay. That's helpful. Um,
Hey, Jordan, are we, are you-
We have four. It's still a, uh, still quorum, but it's a small quorum.
Hey, Jordan, Jordan, back to, can you hear me?
Yeah.
I've got to go in 10 minutes. Um,
Okay.
I, I think I, I think I heard you say something about tying demo permit to removal permit?
Yeah, those are our last two.
That, you know, I, I'm not sure. Is, is that, uh, is that a part of this?
Yeah, there's no language proposed on it. It was suggested by a member of council. I'll be honest, I, I, uh, I feel like that's really starting to get into overregulation on my two cents on it real quick. I, I sense the value and the frustration when they issue a demo permit, they go in, they chop down a bunch of trees and then build a house two or three years later, or in some cases, those houses still aren't built. It's frustrating as a neighbor to get a bunch of trees that are knocked down for no good reason, other than to clear the lot because they're worried about changes to future tree stuff. I, I get it. Uh, the separation part of it, I think what they're trying to say is in the case of a new build, that the tree permit to cut isn't done until you have your site plan or building permit in place. It just gets crosses so far into the overregulation and puts a lot of, that I, I struggle to support it. And that's my two cents.
Yeah, I'm, I'm at the same place.
Tony, you're nodding. You have any thoughts?
Um, I don't really have any, uh, I don't really have any strong thought.
Alex, you think it's helpful, the sentiment and could be helpful towards maintaining canopy? Is that, do I have that right?
Well, I mean, I'm, I'm listening to what you're saying and I, and I find value in what you're saying as well. Um, I, I think we discussed this last time. I don't think you have to have a building permit to know, to have a demo permit. So you may not know what you're going to build when you demo. So, um, and it's more cost effective if the trees are coming out to go ahead and do it with the demo. Um, it's, uh, yeah, I would, I, I mean, you might argue you can demo, but you, well, I don't know. I really don't know how to finesse it. And I agree that it starts to, uh, get into overreach. Um, so I'm not sure where I fall on this.
I mean, it could be handled by modifying the code involving demo permit. I don't know if it needs to be in the tree canopy code, but, um, I get it. I understand what is frustrating. It's, it's, I, I think there's validity to the issue. I'm not sure the solution proposed is, is going to work for me though.
Well, then I don't, I, I don't know how this plays into relocation of trees. Uh, or affects even the dress. Yeah. Well, I, you know, I, ideally, um, you know, we would encourage people to consider it. Um, but, uh, but if, if the language, uh, that, uh, y- y- you know, that is being discussed, uh, uh, gets adopted, you know, I think you're creating some real problems there, uh, from just some, you know, some fairly significant, you know, timing issues. It's a little bit of a chicken and egg.
Jordan, I only have one comment. Um, I was not the council member who requested this. Uh, and I feel like that I went down this rabbit hole a little bit when I brought the idea to you guys of having a landscaping requirement come in if somebody demos and they're going to leave a lot open for a while before they build. Um, the reason I was looking at that is just for water quality and T C Q issues. And it seemed like that planning and zoning wasn't interested in taking that up at that point either. And I also found out a lot about the timing requirements and kind of the challenges that that would place in our current permitting process of adding some requirement like that. So, um, that's kind of where I stand on it. I think, I think we've already tried to go down the rabbit hole once and it was about T C Q, which is arguably a bigger issue right now. And I think there would have to be some changes in how our permitting is done first.
Okay. Nash, you want to weigh in? All right. We lost Alex and we've got five more minutes of Jamil, uh, and then we lose quorum. And I totally understand that. Do we want to have another one and let all this marinate? Do we want to try and vote through as we've discussed it? How's everybody feeling on here? I, I would state, I think we're in a good spot where we could actually make a recommendation. Um, but also find a not make one yet, take no action and we come through and hit it first and foremost next, next month.
Let's just knock this out, man. Let's, let's-
Yeah, cherry laurel is fine, right? Everybody's fine with cherry laurel. I look to-
Good with that and cherry laurel. That's fine.
And the demo-
Find the numbers. We got five minutes. Um, recommendation A, we, on A, we recommend, uh, the language is proposed. B, recommend language is proposed. C, um, God bless. We changed the language. Sorry. I don't, I have it in here. Let me go to it. Dear Lord, um,
We struck the middle provision that said, uh, that you would require certification, starting with the comma and that the certified arborist has documented at least two prior actions performed by the certified arborist within the previous three years to mitigate the condition. So we deleted that. And then we added in prior to the word waive, it will say the city arborist may reduce or waive the replacement fee.
Yep.
And may reduce or waive the tree replacement application fee.
Yeah, found it here. I'd written it in the wrong color. So, uh, as Brian said, we're agreed on that. Um, and we'll get this language across for that one. Next one, uh, let me just pull it up on a different sheet here. Um, that's C. D, property notice recurrence, we modified to represent putting in it instead of, we said the, uh, uh, dashboard of-
Dashboard of the car instead of, yeah.
Yeah. We said approved vendor. So we'll get that language across. Um, F, critical root zone, we recommend that they, sorry, what? Oh, I skipped E, sorry.
E's mailed notice requirements and we voted to recommend that they not require-
Do not. Yep.
We recommended against instituting a provision like that.
Um, for F, we recommended they do not address critical root zones at this time. For G, we suggested they keep the current language. For H, we consider they, we ask they consider removing cedar elms at a three to two vote. And with discussion with an arborist. Dang it. I, we're good with cherry laurels. Please add. J, we suggested a tree survey minimum size of trees at six inches. And on K, we recommended they do not take action. They do not require separation of, uh, building permit and demo and tree, tree permit and keep trees until building permit is issued. Yeah. Do not, do not require a separation of demo and tree permit. All right. Not discuss. I have, uh, size of tree. And I have, uh, the method by which we measure the tree. I will postpone those to the next, next meeting. So this is, that's around 12 inches.
Let's just keep it at the list that we did and we'll, we'll take this subject matter up for possible action next meeting.
You got it. Exactly.
Did we, did we talk about this delayed time period? M?
There's an M? Son of a-
Shit.
And an L? Ah.
There's an L and an M.
We're running out of time, so we're going to have to do L, M, and-
Well, I think we just talked about L a second ago and, and Alex agreed that's a hard thing to do. It kind of dovetails with the demo permit timing, I think.
Yeah, you're right.
Um, and then M is an interesting concept that I like. Uh, it seems complicated. So maybe, you know, I mean, we have to talk about how you would put that in code, but.
Oh, boy. Jamil, you still there?
I'm still here.
If you could hang up, we lose quorum and we'll just deal with it now. I'm just kidding. Put it down for misery, man. Sorry, guys. Um,
Brian took you up on that.
I, uh, we lost Brian. That's funny. Um, I like, I like M. I like giving, it, it gave that ability to plant a tree and, you know, go get the permit. We think we're going to remove that. And then you plant a tree to replace it and you remove it later. And if, if you end up with an extra tree, you end up with an extra tree. Um,
Yeah. If the staff can kind of keep track of that, I guess, I think it seems totally reasonable.
I did add some proposed language. It's on, um, it's under, uh, section 107 dash 374 and it's H. It's on page nine of the page numbers. I don't, I don't know what page it is of the packet.
It's on page 16 of the packet.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question? I, I found the language. Thank you, Amy, for putting that in there so clearly. Um, is the only purpose of this is to give some more flexibility to the property owner as to when they remove the tree?
Yes.
Yeah. I don't know why we wouldn't want this. Like, it seems to be a no-brainer.
The only, the only thing I could see against it is if it's burdensome for the staff to, I don't know, figure that out.
Did we have, did we have a time requirement before? Like, if it, if it wasn't addressed before,
Well, before-
Somewhat indefinite, right?
Before you had to come in and get your permit to remove your tree and indicate which trees you were then going to plant to replace it. And if you're, if you get a building permit, you can abate the time for replanting for a longer period of time. Um, but this is, this is another David Smith's request because he's wanting to plant, I think, three cherry laurels right now. And, and the, in the anticipation that he's going to have to remove a tree later, but he's wanting to go ahead and get those trees planted and not plant now and in this season and then lose the ability to count those as his replacement trees later.
I don't, I don't know why we wouldn't. Yeah. I, I can't think of a reason why we wouldn't allow that.
I, I think one year is also a good amount of time. The request was for three years, but that starts to get to be difficult to manage. But one year from issuing to the permit to then cut it down and then you can plant your stuff early is great to me.
So it looks like G right before this, Amy. Does that say a permit for removal of a protected tree expires one year?
Yes.
And the next thing says you have to remove it within one year. Is that-
Yes.
Am I missing the nuance between the two?
Yeah, I'm with, I'm with Tony in that I don't-
That's a good, that's a good question. You, I might be missing the nuance.
H doesn't seem to be adding what David Smith is asking when I'm reading the language.
Yeah.
I think, I think it needs to say that you can count a tree that was planted-
Within one year prior to.
Right. And I think, where, where is that provision? I would give them a year forward looking or backward looking from the tree removal to plant their tree, just so that they can line it up with the right growing season or something.
Um, sounds like this is becoming the David Smith, uh, tree ordinance here. Can, can we, can we reneg on the cherry laurel since I know it was him now?
Is that a cherry, the cherry laurel, David Smith thing? I'm going to, I'm going to back off with my support.
I think we now have his, uh, nickname for the strike force. He's now cherry laurel. That's going to be his, uh, name on that deal. All right.
Are you going to be cedar elm?
Yeah, cedar elm.
You'll, you'll be cedar elm, cedar elm reporting to cherry laurel. Go team, go.
All right. Um, y'all, we're kind of running out of time. You want to punt?
I think I support the sentiment that's articulated- I think, I support the sentiment that's articulated as the bullet item H or as Amy described it, I guess, um. I don't know that this language is accomplishing that, though.
Okay, yeah, I'm not sure.
Can we just say a recommendation that we, that we agree with the concept and, and, uh, think they should.
Yes.
Store that and write it.
So, here, here's what to write, we voted to allow flexibility in planting the replacement trees. Prior to the removal of the tree, at least as much of a year, as a year.
Hey, Jordan, I'm going to have to drop, the, the, do you need me, uh, for a vote or are we just passing it on?
We, we'd need you for a vote on this if we choose to vote, so, do you want to make?
Can we take action now, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that we forward these recommendations as articulated in the last hour and a half to city council. Um, as you've documented, maybe with your careful notes.
Okay, is there a second?
Two and a half hours, but yeah, I'll second.
There we go.
All right, any further discussion of the motion? All right, hearing none, um, I will ask, uh, Charlie if he's still on, any problems with what we're doing?
No.
Good, all in favor, roll call, Jamil, you're first. Signified by saying aye or nay?
Aye.
Uh, Brian?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Jordan is an aye, all right, um, I'm going to go ahead and motion to table our other items because we're going to lose quorum, so let's motion to table.
Second.
All right, all in favor by acclamation, say aye.
Aye.
Nay, hearing none, motion to adjourn passes unanimously. Um, so at least we could say we ended it before Jamil ended it for us.
I'm out, see you guys.
Guys, thanks for taking a large part of your night to help out Rollingwood, to help out Amy, uh, I'll just say it quick, thank you, great job, awesome. Amy?
Thank you, Amy.
Thanks to you for putting more time than we were able to put into this over the last year to, uh, yeah, for a couple of years, really, so, well done.
Thanks, Amy, it, it, awesome work on this, this looks great.
If anybody named Cherry Laurel, I think it's Amy, well done, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Amy, staff also appreciates your ordinance and we think it's easy to enforce.
Thanks.
All right, y'all, thanks everybody for your time, go catch the end of the presidential debates and whatnot, um, and we will. Come back at it with the rest of this agenda next month, all right? Thank you.
Thank you.